Come in is the actual open meeting act made available and accessible to all members of the public. I would ask if you would stand, please, join us in a moment of silence and as well, the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
We'll continue with roll call. Coy?
Here.
Langy?
Here.
Merrill?
Here.
Clausen?
Here.
Murin?
Here.
Mooney?
Here.
Faust?
Here.
File?
Here.
All right, under action, I would ask for approval of the consent agenda that was provided you in your packet.
So moved, Your Honor.
Second.
A motion with a second to approve the consent agenda, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, and as well approval of the full agenda as was provided you.
So moved, Your Honor. Second.
Motion with a second to approve the full agenda, again, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. Tonight we have a special presentation, we're going to turn to you, Mark, first, if you will come up and give us street project updates.
Mayor and Council, I'm here tonight just to give you another status update on our various street projects around town. First of all, I'll start with Michigan Avenue. All underground pipe work is complete there. Today I visited with contractor this morning and they're finishing up excavating subsoils and replacing with a rock subgrade. Should be finishing that up today, if they haven't already, if not tomorrow, first thing. Scheduling is always a moving target, but the contractor did indicate to me that we should see concrete on the ground sometime this week. It'll be a small amount, it'll probably be some hand pours, but the rest of the week they're going to work on some small pours and prepping for mainline paving. Right now, like I said, the schedule is a moving target, but tentatively they're looking at Friday or early next week to do the mainline paving on Michigan Avenue, so.
Great.
So we'll start to see a lot of action down there, that's noticeable, unlike the subsurface work, so that's, that's good news. I guess any questions on that?
Are you still having much contact with the neighbors, or has it kind of mellowed down, are they understanding that?
I think now that we got the, the sub, the rock surface in there, that's a surface that they can walk on, that's not mud or dirt, so they've, they've been real great to work with. You know, whenever I'm out on the site, I'll talk to a few of them, but from what I've heard, you know, everyone's been real great to work with, but.
It's appreciated, Mark, yeah. It's appreciated, though, because it, it really has quieted down, too, so, good work.
Next I'll move on, or unless there's any other questions on Michigan. All right, I'll move on to 20th Street, where, I know last week I had a map where I showed you where we're doing phase one of 20th Street, thereby between the hotels and Times Square. They're finishing up the concrete work on that, and then once we get enough cure time, they'll be moving on to the next phase, so, early to mid next week, they should be moving on to the phase two, and phase two is from basically the west drive of Times Square going north to Parker Circle. That'll be the biggest phase of the project. During that phase, residents at Parker Circle will have access from the north, businesses will have access from the south, there will be a few residents that actually have driveways on 20th Street that won't have access, and, but, but mo- the majority of the folks there should have access, there will be a few that won't. I'll move on to 18th Street because they're finishing up work on that as well, south of the Roundabout, and we will be opening that up concurrently as we were moving to the second phase of 20th Street, that way, as 20th Street is closed to all through traffic, 18th Street will be open through and through, so folks can use that as an alternative route, so that worked out pretty well. Other than that, any questions on either of those projects?
Mark, for those residents that won't be able to get in their properties, how long do you anticipate that, weather permitting?
Weather permitting, four weeks is about the timeframe we have for that project. We did talk to the contractor and the dr- and the sidewalk on the west side, we asked him to maintain that sidewalk from Parker Circle going south to, so they could at least have foot, foot access, you know, pedestrian access to their homes.
To about, about a month?
Yeah, about a month. I think, I think his schedule said three to four weeks, but probably four weeks to where they, they won't have access to their driveways.
Mark, is there an option where we could utilize maybe some of the motel parking for their vehicles so they could walk to their homes?
I believe there's a, a fence, a, a privacy fence and some bushes back there, so I don't know if there's really an option to utilize that. I, I remember I drove around, looked at that the other day, so there's not really an easy way to, to get access through there, and, you know, so I have to rely on the hotel taking up some of their parking for, for the residents, so I don't think that'd be a very viable option.
So currently they're parking where, then?
They'll park on Parker Circle, and then they'll have to walk.
Walk across.
And I think there's about five or six residents along that stretch, but, but we will maintain access to the residents on Parker Circle, so those folks will have access, it's just the folks that live on 20th.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else for Mark? Okay.
All right, I would like to just reiterate that tomorrow we are having an open house at 5:30 regarding our sanitary sewer project south of the river along Highway 81 corridor. We're going to have a 5:30 present, or 5:30 open house, followed at 6 o'clock, we'll actually do a formal presentation with the engineering consultants, so I would invite everyone to attend that who has any interest.
Right here.
Here in the council chambers.
Okay, thanks again, Mark.
Mayor, I'm Mr. Dennis, I'd also like to add that that includes North Airport Road from Highway 81 west about a half a mile, and includes Sherwood Road from Highway 81 east about a half a mile.
Okay, good input, thanks, Dennis. All right, and next we have the tree advisory board before us this evening with a presentation. Carolyn, is that you? And you'll.
Good evening.
Announce yourself and sign in.
I'm Carolyn Lingenthaler, and I'm part of the Norfolk Tree Advisory Board. Our other members are Susan Donahue, Jesse White, and Les Mann. The Tree Advisory Board, we've been in existence for four years now, and the last three, we have recognized a business in Norfolk for outstanding landscape. It seems like, really landscaping is a very important part of our community and bringing new business in, that everything looks great, and so, we have felt that recognizing a few of these businesses that go that extra mile is very important. So, this year, the award, excuse me, award goes to the Stratton, Belay, Dole, Carlson, and Beitner law firm. And Lee, getting all that on a plaque. As I understand, Jim Cooby was one of them that helped with the landscape.
He did, he did some lions work on it.
And our consideration usually is the fact that it's highly visible to the public, and the diversity of the plant materials that's huge, and if you drive past their business on 200 West Benjamin Avenue, you'll see there's evergreens, there's grasses, rosebushes, a big diverse selection of plants that are growing very well, whoever maintains it is doing a great job. So, this is on behalf to you for your business, and then this one, I'm hoping finally we'll get home, because we've had it, and it was supposed to be in the chamber offices, or here, and this is the first year now that this is established that we can do that.
Great, it will be.
May I leave this here?
Please do, your city administrator will be more than happy to make sure that gets on a wall soon.
Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
Thank, congratulations, Doug, thank you.
Secret that it's somewhat maintained, I wear jeans in the afternoon, so then I can squat afterward and hold it.
Carolyn, to you in the group, too, thank you for what it is you do, I think it's making a big difference in the community, so, thanks for your efforts. All right, and next, we get to go to a public hearing and talk about, discuss the stoplights located at the intersection of Second Street and Norfolk Avenue, and as well, Third Street and Norfolk Avenue. So I'm going to open this public hearing, and Shane, do you want to start us off?
Yes, ma'am, I sure, I sure may. Mayor and Council and the community, you know, this has, has been a pleasant experience for staff, really, to study the traffic flow downtown and look at it, the interaction that we've had with the public has been outstanding, I can tell you, has really becomes, you know, refreshing when you, when you have the citizens that get affected by, by a decision like this, when we take a, when we make a study, to understand why we're doing that, so I really just wanted to give them a shout out and give the council a shout out, really, because, you know, sometimes people don't sit still long enough to understand and appreciate what the staff's trying to do. This particular action came from the boots-on-the-ground guys, our street, our street crews, that realized that we're going to have to update those stoplights downtown, and it's about $12,000 estimate on per stoplight down there, and they, just in their experience and seeing the traffic flows over the years, and they said, hey boss, you know, this is, probably doesn't meet the warrants anymore, and maybe this is an opportunity for us to take a look at that and to see if, if we truly need those stoplights downtown, and I said, you know, you're absolutely right, I appreciate that, we need to take a stitch in time when we can, and make these studies so we don't unwisely spend dollars. $12,000, $24,000 total, makes an impact to our budget, and so we, we like to do those things, and that's exactly what we, we intended to do with this study. Once we got out and visited with downtown businesses and heard their input, and just kind of kept an ear to the ground as far as what the effects of the stoplights were, I heard kind of a mixed bag, really, of some like it, some hated it, some thought the traffic flow was much better, some thought the traffic flow was worse, especially if you were parking downtown. There was a number of folks that said they had a safety concern from backing out to pedestrian, pedestrian traffic and, and whatnot, you know, when I talked to the Downtown Business Association, which was, again, a great interaction, usually when I go to, sometimes when I go to meetings, I, I hear a lot of the negative, but that particular meeting, I heard a lot of the positive, and, again, they understood what we were trying to do, but there was a mixed bag there, some, but there was, here recently, and at least in the last two weeks, it's really been an outpouring of folks from the downtown, I think the elected officials have heard that outpouring, that they felt the lights needed to go back on. I will say, though, that for the traveling public, at least in my, in my travels as a city administrator, I've heard the opposite of that, that if you're a traveler down there, you, they like the flow of the traffic going downtown. So it really becomes a decision for the council to kind of weigh, weigh all of what the downtown wants to be and what it looks like, and how it flows or doesn't flow, and the goods and bads of all that. We have, did some fact finding, as you always want us to do, and I'm probably talking a little bit too much on it, but we did do our facts finding as staff, we did an engineering study, and we studied the warrants at that intersection before we shut the lights off in March, and as our boots-on-the-ground guys felt, it didn't meet, it didn't meet the warrants, it doesn't, neither Third nor Second Street meets the traffic warrants anymore, which we suspected the study would find. And then the police department also did a vehicle count and a speed study, one in May, and one just here within the last two weeks, just to see the number of cars, and then, more importantly, to see the speeds that we're getting downtown, that's another point that, if the interaction I've had with several of the downtown businesses, that they, in generally, felt that their, the speed had increased, you know, as they watched in their, in their daily interaction with their businesses. According to our speed study, our facts gathered here, the eighty-fifth percentile is showing 26 miles per hour, which means 85% of the cars that are, are moving in the downtown are going 26 miles per hour. So, that's what we expect, the speed, the speed limit is 25 miles per hour down there. One was 26, one was, was 27 in the second study, so, from the first study to the second study, we seen a one mile per hour change in the speed that the folks were traveling in the eighty-five, eighty-fifth percentile, so not a major change there. The average speed, according to the first study, was about 16 miles per hour for the, I believe, the eastbound, or the westbound, and 17 miles per hour for the eastbound traffic. So, our facts, those are our facts that we were able to gather. The, the whole, the whole interaction down there was, again, pleasant, and become community decision for the mayor and council, so, you know, I just appreciate you allowing staff to do their work and listening to, to those recommendations, and then just being patient with us as we collect the data and then present it to you. So that whole interaction has been positive, and that is always refreshing. So with that, I sure would be happy to answer any questions that you might have for me, and go from there.
Well, I think Shane, you've laid it out very well, and you're absolutely right, this council looks at each one of the division leads to come back with a budget that every year needs to certainly be something that the council can support, and so, obviously, as he stated, each division has their own budget that they have to be responsible for, and I too, kudos to them for coming forth with, with the thought, with the idea of where it was that we, as a council, might be able to accept their suggestion, whatever it might be, and saving some dollars. So it was work well done, but now it's up to us to continue this public hearing and hear from, unless anyone has a question for Shane, before we go on.
Also, I might add, Mayor and Council, that the public hearing does not have any attached action items to it, our intent was to put those action items, your options, in front of you at the next council meeting, to give the community the public hearing time, and then a two-week period in, in between this council meeting and the next, to allow it to develop in the community, so you can do your due diligence as elected officials, and then make a recommend, make a decision at the next council meeting, is what we have lined out in the agenda for you, as you've probably already seen.
So with that, is there anyone in the audience that will come forward and state their name and speak to this issue? As you know, Dennis, we'll have you sign in as well. Thanks.
Sorry I'm late, I didn't bring a note, though. First, I just got a, just a brief comment or a brief statement I want to read, but I wanted to just publicly thank Shane, I was a part of that meeting a couple weeks ago with a number of downtown business owners, had some great, great conversation, very civil conversation, you know, sometimes when you're talking about changing a person's neighborhood, or their, their front door, their back door, it can become a personal issue, but it was, it was some good conversations, so. Let me just share a couple comments with you, and I'd be happy to answer any questions as well. On behalf of the Norfolk Area Chamber of Commerce and our retail stores and service businesses located at Riverpoint and downtown Norfolk, I'm here today to urge the City of Norfolk to continue to maintain and operate the much-needed traffic lights located at the corners of Second and Norfolk Avenue and Third and Norfolk Avenue. Why should we maintain and operate these traffic lights? Public safety is first and foremost, young children are prevalent in this specific area of our community, we have two dance studios located one block away from each other, which brings parents and carloads of kids walking in the area. Pauline Dance Studio and Dance, et cetera, are two of those successful family-friendly businesses, and we need to keep our kids safe in that area as they're going to and from those, those businesses. Just down the street, we have the Northeast Nebraska Area Aging, Area Agency on Aging located as well, and seniors need to feel safe utilizing our diagonal parking in front of the agency, as well as the neighboring stores, and we need to help keep them safe in that process as well. As we look at the people attraction piece of it, young professionals, retirees, people of all ages are oftentimes looking for the same things, and it's something we call a stroll district, and a stroll district is a, a people and pedestrian-friendly area where people can park their car or walk from home to enjoy area restaurants, pubs, coffee shops, grocery stores, and more. And that is exactly why so many have worked so hard over the past few years to develop such a stroll district in downtown Norfolk. This is not the right time to create an expressway through our main street area, we need to continue to attract people to our downtown area. Housing and community development is another reason to maintain and operate the traffic lights. Private entrepreneurial investment continue to thrive in the Riverpoint area, the community has invested millions of public and private dollars to create a vibrant downtown, in an area that attracts retail shoppers who spend money and create tax dollars in the Norfolk community. Loft apartments, some of which are already in place, others that are under construction, are helping to address some of our housing shortages that we all talk so much about, and those are taking place in the downtown area as well, which increases our pedestrian traffic in that area, and we need to make those new downtown residents feel welcome in their new neighborhood. At the end of the day, as a, as a chamber, as, as someone helping represent the area businesses downtown, we just want to work closely with the city to just to make sure that we do the, the best decision, what's best for the, for the community, for the people, to keep it a safe environment, and to really continue to grow what we've already started in recent years in the downtown area, to make it a vibrant area. We have a couple other easy access channels, you know, be it Brosch or Madison, that has fewer traffic lights, and I think if someone's looking for a speedy way to get to the downtown area, those are some great, you know, express routes to get through. As a chamber guy, I don't want anyone to speed through the downtown area, I want them to stop at every business downtown and spend a few dollars, and as a city council, hopefully you want to collect those tax dollars as well, so, those are my comments.
All right, Dennis, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Any comments or questions for Dennis? Well, he's before you. Okay, well presented, Dennis, thank you. Anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to, again, state your name for us, if you will, and sign in.
Dan Gary is my name, I live at 1707 North 13th Street, but our office is downtown, and we spend lots of time downtown. When I heard this comment, or this concept of taking out the, the traffic lights, I thought, whoa, yeah, that, I mean, let's look at this, and I've had a hard time trying to make up my mind, do we want them, or don't we want them, or whatever, so, and, and I understand budgets and those kind of things, but I've come to, I've come to the conclusion, when I come to an intersection and I get a green light, I don't have to make a decision. The light tells me it's okay to go, I put my defensive driving skills at work, and I look to the right, and I look to the left, and everybody stops, and I can go, and I don't have to worry about too much. When I have a stop sign, I have to make a decision on whether there's cars coming, how fast are they coming, how long is it going to take, do I have time to pull out and get out ahead of them, or whatever to do. So, so as I come to the intersections, I have to make a decision. While the streetlights were off, I've made two decisions that were wrong. I was coming south on, on Third Street, and I was stopped at the sign, and I was going to turn east on Norfolk Avenue, I looked both ways, there's plenty, plenty of time, I pulled out and turned, and just as I was coming in front of the bank, two boys wanted to cross the street, and they must have thought I was going straight, but at the last minute, I turned to go down the avenue, and, and they, and, and they ran out in the street, and, and I stopped, and there, there we are, looking right at each other like, oh, oh, made a mistake. In the meantime, a car from the east sees me blocking the intersection, I did have a trailer on behind, blocking the intersection, they stopped, and the guy from the west, he stopped. The boys looked at me, and I looked at them, they went on ahead, out of the way, between, between my trailer and the car that had stopped there, and then I went on, and we all cleared the intersection, and everything was okay, didn't happen. And I made one other mistake, similar details. So when I came up to the intersection, I made a mistake. So the, the question that I would ask you is, we're going to have, I don't know, the dance studio, and those people have seven, eight, nine, 10-year-old kids that cross the street. By not putting in the stoplights, we're going to tell them, hey, we want you to make a decision, we want you to look down the street and see if there's enough room for you to go, we want you to look and see if there's enough room, and then you make the decision to cross the street. If we have the stoplights, and we have the, the green light and the walk sign, we're telling our kids that, hey, the cars should stop, it's okay to go, we've made the decision for you. So, when I look at it, I ask myself, is that something we want our kids to do at these intersections? After I myself have made two mistakes, I mean, they came out okay, and I don't know whether they were mistakes, or just difference in judgment, or, or whatever, but, so, that's the issue, the way I look at it, and would ask you to ask that question of yourself. Thank you.
All right. Thank you, Dan. Anyone else that wants to come forward and address the council? All right. I'm seeing or hearing none, so with that, then, discussion here, council?
I've had quite a few people come down and talk to me, or give me a phone call. At first, I thought, like Shane kind of said, we thought it was going to be a good idea, we could close that. I've had a lot of reports from the downtown, and a lot of report from people, and the way people are talking, if you don't stop downtown, if you're just going from point A to B, it's faster to get through town without those stoplights, and like they said earlier, you know, we have the two side streets behind that, where you can do that same purpose, but the downtown people are starting to, to call and, and to bring up facts, that people trying to back out of their parking stall after they've been in their store, that the cars are coming too fast, and a, and a stoplight gives you a natural gap there, so you can get out, and those gaps are not appearing anymore, so. The downtown merchants, I've had a lot of them call and say that it is dangerous not to have them, and it is risky for their patrons to back out when they've been in there shopping, so, a lot of the downtown, and a lot of the people that shop downtown, have indicated to me that, that we need those in there to protect them, and to slow traffic down, and to make the downtown work for sorts, so that people slow down, look in the windows, do their shopping. The people that use A to B, they want to go through there, but like I said, they can use the two other side streets, so, right now, I'm getting more indication that we need the lights, just from the people who've talked to me.
I'd like to add to that. Turn my phone, it was off. Perfect timing. Same thing, Dave, I made some calls and, and received some calls, and talked to a few people that have downtown businesses, and, and as some after-hours stuff talks to people at those places, too, and kind of the same sort of feedback, it was, you know, maybe right away, you look at it, think, hey, it's not a bad idea, I can kind of buzz down through there, but after a while, some of the people actually who have businesses next to those intersections, said they saw, one instance, this lady kind of got stranded out in the middle, because the eastbound and westbound really didn't, weren't paying attention what she was, you know, she was out in the middle there, and kind of got caught, and one gentleman told me that he had actually saw one of his customers couldn't get out of their stall, he went out there and kind of stopped traffic, so like, he could get, get them out. So, you know, after, I guess, sometimes things look good on paper, you know, and, and it was maybe something to look at, and I guess we're still going to get some more comments, but have a tendency to, same sort of comments, so, thanks.
I would, I would tell you, I had the same experience with people getting ahold of me, and me reaching out and talking to a few people, they seemed to think that as a public safety issue, it's probably a better idea to turn them on than it was to keep them off, and, so, in the last couple, three weeks, every time I drive through downtown, I take my handy-dandy timer on my phone, and if I'm at Seventh Street, I want to find out how long it took me to get to First Street, if I was at First Street, I want to find out how long it took me to get to Seventh Street, and even with stopping at the lights that are there, I got, it took me, I think the, the longest one was a minute and 52 seconds, which is not a, and, by the way, I might say at speed limiter below.
26 or 27 miles an hour.
I think it was 20, 24 and a half mile an hour, I'm pretty sure. Anyway, point is, those stoplights downtown are 28 seconds apiece, I don't know, when we put the new ones up, how, how long they last, but I'm going to guess if they're like the rest of them, they're 28 seconds apiece, and so, if you can get from First Street to Seventh Street in a minute and 52 seconds, and you got a, you got a, see another 28 seconds out of your day, I don't think it's a big deal, when you look at it in terms of public safety, so, light them up, that's what I said.
Mayor, I'd add to that, the contact I've received from citizens has been overwhelmingly in support of keeping the stoplights. We, a lot of people have invested a lot of time and energy into making our downtown, over the years, become an inviting and friendly place for. over the years, become an inviting and friendly place for customers and pedestrians. And I think we ought to keep it that way by prioritizing public safety over traffic flows in this instance. So, I agree with Rob, keep them on.
I guess, I think we've all probably got the same type of calls. I, I think the downtown was very adamantly for them. The calls I received outside of the downtown were probably about 50/50. I've heard people say that they're going downtown more now. I've heard people say that there's safety concerns. You know, just to see the evolution of that, I mean, Norfolk Avenue used to be Highway 275. I would assume that's when the lights were put in, and by current engineering standards, I'd be surprised if any of the intersections meet the requirements. But I think through the whole thing, I think it's been a good experience. I think that I commend staff, I commend the people that are on the street doing the job that came up with this idea as a possible savings. It's, it's something that I think will be revisited again, because I think in time, the software in these lights will have to be replaced again in 15, 20 years, and maybe it's $50,000 in intersection, and future councils are going to have to wrestle with that. But I guess, you know, the bottom line, I, I was, kind of had to laugh about Dan's situation, and, and up until about two years ago, I always felt that traffic lights were, were for safety. And Dennis would always argue with me that they're for traffic flow, and I tend to agree with the latter at this point. Two years ago, I entered an intersection on a green light, and for the next eight weeks, I was driving a rental car and taking chiropractor treatments, and my son was treated for a concussion and whiplash, so those stoplights aren't as safe as we sometimes think. And stop signs, I've never got hit on a four-way stop before, but maybe even thinking outside the box, maybe we put the stop signs in the wrong place, maybe we should have put them on Norfolk Avenue, let the north and south streets through, but who knows? I like the idea that we're thinking outside the box to try to find money that can be spent in other parts of the community, so I think this was worthwhile project, and hopefully we'll get some more feedback in the next couple of weeks.
I got to echo what Dale said about staff, and, you know, Shane, you brought it up too. Staff did a great job of recommending how we might want to take a look at this. And we go to, in budget time, we look at these folks and, and say, how can we, how can we shave a little here, shave a little there? So, I should have said it a while ago, but staff did a nice job in, in coming up with a recommendation.
You know, kind of as a sidebar, I think something that came out of this truly was the safety of the folks down at Paul Inns and the other dance studio, and maybe with the new configuration with the downtown parking, that will create some opportunities. But myself personally, I've always avoided that area because I don't want to be the person that runs over my neighbor's child. Unloading and loading in a through lane of traffic isn't ideal. Kids darting in and out between parked cars isn't ideal, and I, I would reach out to those businesses to have the city as a willing partner to try to find alternatives to the way we're currently loading and unloading at those areas. But that came out, I mean, it's something, I guess, day-to-day, you just deal with it, but I think it really came out as a, as a big point. That was one of the first things that we saw was with the Paul Inns folks calling and saying, hey, you're making an unsafe situation here, which, in my opinion, was already unsafe.
Anyone else want to speak to this, or is it council? Okay, there's been some great discussion here. If I could, I'd like to reference, we have a young lady here from the Norfolk Youth Leadership Group, and I will tell you, I met with them last Sunday evening, and if I may share, your recommendation was for the lights to go back up. Consensus of the group, which I thought was rather interesting, too. So, I figured they might have had a different opinion of that, but again, if you want to speak to it, otherwise, I certainly have shared what it, what it was that you shared with me that night, so, okay.
Mayor?
Yes?
If I may, I just want to focus on one public safety. I'm a little public safety guy, as, as you know, and you can never say this too much. The truest public safety we're ever going to have is when the pedestrian and the motor vehicle operator are clicking on all cylinders, and they're making eye contact, and they're preparing for the other one not to stop. So, you know, I just want to say that to the community, so you can never say that too much, because you'll, if you poll our citizens, they'll see every crosswalk gets blown by vehicles, or blown by pedestrians, and that's when we have tragedy, whether we have a light there or not, that's what happens. So, the, there is some, when we say we're going to put the lights back in because of public safety, there, we just can't make sure, we got to make sure our citizens know that just because there's a light there does not give them an umbrella that they can clearly cross because it's green, or it says walk, or whatever the case may be. Because when we first started this, I sat down and drank coffee right in front of the downtown coffee company, and in 20 minutes, there was three people that blew the red light at Third Street. It just amazed me, Susan Reisinger was sitting right next to me. And I, it's so, folks have got to understand that when they're making, interacting with an intersection, whether it's lighted or not, they have to be aware of the pedestrian, and they have to be aware of the vehicle. So, I just want to make sure that the community hears that again, and hears it often, so it's important.
Okay. All right, well, good discussion. I'm going to go ahead and close this public hearing, and you'll join us on October the 7th, is it, the next meeting? Or are we, is that right? October 7th, and we will then...
Yeah, and I can, I can, if you'd like, Mayor, I could tell you briefly what your options would be in those resolutions that Clint and his staff have prepared for you. They're basically leave the lights on both intersections, take the lights off both intersections, or leave the lights on one intersection and take them off on the other, or vice versa. So, just so the community knows that, you know, there's more than two options out there.
Okay. All right. With that, then, we're going to move on, and again, I encourage any feedback that you want to share with the council before they do their final vote in, actually, it's about three weeks, isn't it? I think we have a, so, in three weeks. So, thank you all of you for being here tonight, and we're going to move on to a second public hearing, and that is for the mayor and the city council to consider submitting an application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development for a community development block grant in the amount of $417,900 for comprehensive revitalization activities that include $384,500 for street improvements, and $33,400 for general administration of the project, and to review current CDGB projects, O9 CR 107, 10 CR 1007, and 11 CR 1007 as required by the grants. And with that, we'll open the public hearing, and looks like Tom is here to speak to, for us.
Hello, Mayor, Council, Tom McInnes, I'm here to talk to you about this next round of applications. Actually, this is, believe it or not, the state of Nebraska has some extra money laying around for the eight communities that qualify for this program. So, they wanted to know if the cities were interested in these funds. We met with the city staff to see if they could find some projects to use up this extra money, and we came up with some street improvements. They really wanted it to be used on public infrastructure, the state did, not housing, you know, not downtown facade improvements and those kind of things, to get the money spent a little quicker, because there's a short timeline on it. We're, the city staff put together some cost estimates on some possible projects that could be done within the next year, and this is a short timeline on this grant to get it done. And based on that, as you can see, we have a $610,000 project. At this point, we're applying for the maximum grant that we could get based on the two-to-one ratio. State's putting in $2, the, the city's matching with $1, we're $2. So, you know, we're, we're not guaranteed to get this $417,900, but if they come back, you know, the, the minimum we'll get is $250,000, the maximum, who knows what that is? It just depends on what other communities are doing. Some communities may or may not apply at all, so there might be more money out there. But based on the projects that the city staff has, we decided to apply for the, the maximum. That way, we're ready for whatever happens. Like I said, it's to be used for street improvements in the downtown area. The other public hearings, if there's any questions about any of these, please let me know, as required by HUD, to have a second public hearing on the other grants. I do want to point out on the first one listed, the 2009 CR 007, to date, you know, four properties have been acquired, demolished, and lots cleared. One family has received down payment assistance, and two others will receive assistance to purchase the newly constructed homes by the end of the grant date. In the public hearing notice, it was listed as December 31 of 2014. That's an error, so we need to make a correction there, that that's December 31 of 2013. So, Beth could reflect that in the minutes, that would be wonderful. The next grant, the 10 CR 007, that money was all for street improvements. To date, those improvements have been done. I believe the 2010, if my memory serves, was the downtown alley improvements that were done. The 2011 CR, some of that dollars were for streets, infrastructure, sidewalks, those kinds of things, $30,000 for commercial facade improvements. To date, the infrastructure improvements are underway. I believe some of that was the First Street from Norfolk to Brash. Six downtown businesses are currently in that program on the facade improvement side, and the programs are working great. Mark talked about Michigan Avenue project, the city is using that project as match to all the phases of the grants. Everything except this, the, the O9 CR, the 10, and the 11, those require a dollar-for-dollar match, but the special money up top, the extra money, in order to get that money out there, they're kind of giving the cities a deal, so it's a two-for-one, that's why that one is not 50/50. So, any questions about these projects? You drive downtown, under 25 miles an hour, you'll see the wonderful facade improvements that are going on down there on, on those, it's a, it's a great program, so. And also, the street improvements are great. But anyway, it's kind of nice, the state's got some extra money out there, so the city staff, being the go-getters they are, say, we'll spend it. We'll take what we can get.
With your help, and that's appreciated, Tom.
Well, we could do it alone, so.
All right.
Any questions?
Tom, on the first one, what would be the timeline on that, for the project to be completed?
The first one, I believe, good question. The grant is actually due September 20th, which is this Friday. It'll probably take 30, 40 days, you know, to get release of funds, but I think we're supposed to be done within 12 months.
December 31st, 2014.
So, a little over, little over 12 months.
So, we'd have a year approximately to finish the project?
Yeah, probably by the time, by the time we get through the release of funds process, we're going to have to do a, probably a new environmental review on the entire area, just the kind of, we've been doing continued compliance, but since we're getting into some new grants, I think HUD's going to want us to do a, just a refresher, so that'll take time. So, by, you know, by the time we get around to the construction season, it'll be probably, but about, a little over 12 months.
Thank you.
Okay. Anyone else that has questions for Tom?
Tom, on the admin of these grants?
Yes.
That, none of these grants can be lumped together for one admin cost?
No, that's all part of the grant. Each grant is individual, so based on what's going on in that grant, the, the state allows up to a certain percentage, 8, 10% for administration. And those dollars are above and beyond, the city does not have to match on those.
Okay.
So, when you're looking at the matching dollars, like up top, there, that $417,000 grant includes that administration, but the city only has to match on the street work or the facade work. The state pays 100% of the administration.
Okay. And the state is doing the administration of it, or is some of that...
No, actually, we do that.
Yeah, okay.
The Economic Development District contracts with the city to do all that, follow Davis-Bacon and all that stuff.
All right. Great, thank you.
Yep.
Tom, can you outline what the targeted area is?
Oh, good question. It's a typical Monday, and I didn't bring everything I needed, but the downtown area, it's, it encompasses the downtown area.
Can I just tell you what the project we've got planned?
Yeah, that's fine.
The project we've got planned is, is the reconstruction of Prospect from Fourth, Fourth Street to Seventh Street. Is the project that's included in that grant, maybe Fifth Street's in there between Madison and Phillip?
That's the northern border, is Prospect.
Prospect is the north end of the project area. We'll be coming forward with a engineering services contract, probably with Olson and Associates, to do the design of that street if we're successful on the, on the grant.
Award in the grant.
And it does obviously include the entire downtown, which is why we got the facade improvement. I'll send you a map. I apologize for not having, having that in front of me, or a description of the, of the area. But it's the same area that we've been working on since 2005.
Okay. Any other questions for Tom?
This particular grant, Mayor and Council, helps maximize your council priority, priority goals you're in, that you set for us, as far as spending extra dollars on our streets, so it's really a blessing, and Tom and his staff keep us in line and keep us going, so I appreciate that very much.
And we do. Thanks, Tom.
Thank you.
All right. As this is a public hearing, is there anyone else that wants to come forward and speak And I will ask that you two sign in for us and state your name.
My name is Rick Whiperling, and grants are simply taxpayer money that are, I disagree with the grant procedures.
Okay, help me out, Rick. What would you like to see us do differently, to be able...
Not take the money. Leave, leave the money in the private sector's hands, because the money in the private sector's hands has a larger economic impact than if it's taken out of the private sectors and given to the government to spend. That's really my simple thing.
Okay.
Leave the money in the private sector, period.
Appreciate you coming forward. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this?
Well, I addressed that a little bit, and that's your comment. These street improvements, like the First Street, the, the grant helped pay for the improvements on First Street from Norfolk Avenue to Brash.
Yes.
You know, the city bid that out to a private contractor, TDK Construction. They got the award to bid, so, you know, in the end, you know, some of the private industry does get, you know, the benefit from doing these jobs. You know, sometimes with grants, you know, there's, you know, the pros and cons, you know, but also, we got to think, you know, would some of these projects get done without the grant dollars assisting communities in doing their projects, so.
I'd like to address that. I, what's the administration cost?
Come on back up, Rick, will you? So, we can...
Yeah, the administration costs, obviously with grants...
I'm the person who wrote the grants, and then the person that, how much money does the person that writes those grants make?
The city of Norfolk is a dues-paying member of the Economic Development District, and for that dues, we provide a wide range of services. Writing grants for the city of Norfolk is one of those that we do. We don't charge extra for that, that's all inclusive of their dues. I believe the city of Norfolk pays a dollar per capita for their annual dues. That could be writing one grant, or that could be writing 1,000 grants. The administration dollars that come out of the grants, obviously, they're federal grants, there's certain rules and regulations that have to be followed, environmental reviews, have to make sure there's no impact on the human environment. We have to make sure that Davis-Bacon wage rates are paid to the contractors and their employees, so, you know, the contractor can't bid it out and then pay his employees $3 an hour, you know, there are certain wages that have to be paid. That's part of the monitoring that we do of the, of the Davis-Bacon. So, some of that is, is to abide by that red tape, so.
So, we're paying for a bureaucrat in Washington, DC, a bureaucrat in Nebraska, state in Nebraska, we're paying for a bureaucrat here in Norfolk?
I don't know that I see it that way, Rick, but certainly, we've, we've heard your comments, and...
Well, they're not working for nothing.
Obviously, not, no.
They're working for a dollar a year.
No, no, I don't think that's what he, no.
No, they pay a membership due, and for that, we provide a wide range of services. And one of the extra services is administration of these grants. Like on the housing, you know, on that first one, we mentioned, you know, you know, this grant, we use it for housing, so we, we use some of these monies to acquire properties, tear them down, and then those lots were given to Habitat for Humanity, they were given to NeighborWorks, and also opened up to the private sector to build back homes, you know, to get homes back up on the tax... You know, to get homes back up on the tax.
I tried to tear down a house, and there was a house that was built across the street by Habitat for Humanity.
Well, if you need assistance, you can, I'll give you my business card. You can come, come to my office, and we'll talk about anything that we can try to help you do. If you want some assistance on anything.
The Yellow Pages test is, if you can find the Yellow Pages, the government should be doing. That's a Yellow Pages test.
But I just wanted to point out to the mayor and the council that, you know, some of these projects, you know, where, you know, even though their grant dollars being used, those dollars do some, you know, get into the private sector, like the construction companies, you know, to do those works, so.
Point well made, Tom. And again, we're glad you're out there looking out for us, and so, anyone else that wants to come forward and speak to this? Okay. Discussion by this council? All right. Then are we ready to close this public hearing? All right, I will close the public hearing then, and we will move on for consideration of Resolution 2013-35 submitting the grant application to the Nebraska Department of Economic Development requesting, as was stated in the previous public hearing, the 417,900 of community development block grant funds.
Your Honor, introduce Resolution 2013-35.
Second.
I have a motion with a second for consideration of Resolution 2013. Any further discussion? If not, I would ask you to vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Resolution 2013-35 is adopted.
Okay. Next, are we moving on? We have, okay. Public hearing at the request of Japana Rose Revocable Trust for a zone change from C2, Central Business District to C3, the Service Commercial District at 3810 West Norfolk Avenue. I will open this public hearing and...
Good evening.
All right, good evening, again.
Joe Howard, representing Japana Rose Trust.
All right.
Basically, we'd like to, C2 is a central business district and not appropriate for our location out on West Norfolk Avenue. All the property around it is C3, so we'd like to just straighten it out and have the whole property C3.
All right. Joe, before you sit down, counsel, any questions for him at all? Okay, all right. Again, a public hearing. Is there anyone else that wants to speak to this? Or may have questions? If not, discussion then, counsel? Sounds to me like this is pretty much understood. So with that, are we ready to move forward with the?
Scott, do you have any input on this?
No, Trent's gone this evening, so I just offered to sit in. This is believed to be a very desirable choice. We concur with the C2, that central business corridor is kind of a First Street to Seventh Street downtown area designation. Setback provisions and some of the, the lack of required off-street parking provisions just simply don't apply to that remote location. A C3 zoning along a major arterial is exactly what is consistent with the comp plan, is consistent with our historical application of those rules, so we think it's a good thing. It's no secret that the city's been desirous to get in that area cleaned up. I think this is a mechanism to do that. These folks have indicated a strong desire to do that and make that kind of a shining star as far as the gateway from the west, and we're very supportive of all of that. So we think it's great potential for a win-win here, and I've heard nothing but positive about the desire to move this to C3 at this point, so.
Appreciate that.
Any other questions, glad to, glad to answer, attempt to.
We'd like to get that landscape over here in a couple years.
There you go. Good for you, sir.
We're gonna hold you to that. All right. Any other questions or discussion, counsel? If not, we'll look to you, Beth, for the planning commission report.
Norfolk Planning Commission held a public hearing at the request of Japana Rose Revocable Trust for a zone change from C2, Central Business District, to C3, Service Commercial District at 3810 West Norfolk Avenue. The parcel is an island of C2 surrounded by C3 zoning. The rezoning brings the entire area into the C3 zoning, and the owners plan to operate an auto dealership on the parcel.
Okay. And with that, I will close the public hearing and ask for consideration of ordinance number 5268 approving that zone change from C2 to C3 at 3810 West Norfolk Avenue.
Your Honor, I would move consideration of ordinance number 5268 on second.
All right, we have a motion with a second, assuming no further discussion. Short title, Beth?
An ordinance of the city of Norfolk, Madison County, Nebraska, amending the zoning district map of the city of Norfolk, Nebraska, providing when this ordinance shall be in full force and effect, and providing for publication of this ordinance in pamphlet form.
All right. And with that, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5268 carries on first reading.
Your Honor, as there was no negative reports on this in any situation, everybody sees it as a good operation, I would move that we suspend the rules and pass ordinance 5268 on second and third.
Second, Beth.
Okay, we have a motion with a second to suspend the rules and pass on second and third. No further discussion? Please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative. Ordinance 5268 carries on second and third readings.
All right. Next is consideration of approval of Amendment 1 to the Engineering Services Contract with Kirkman, Michael &amp; Associates for the Southwest Sanitary Sewer Interceptor Project resulting in an additional fee of 26,400. I can have a motion for consideration?
So move, Your Honor.
Second.
All right, a motion with a second. How about some discussion on this? Who's Dennis?
Dennis. Kirk and Michael is currently working on this interceptor project that goes from about Fourth and Monroe to 13th and Monroe, and then south to Taizuka Drive. They're working on the right-of-way portion of the project now. When we made our initial contract, we thought there was 15 parcels, and now there's 19 parcels. And then it's been, project has kind of drug out a little bit, so the appraisals are more expensive than what was originally anticipated. So this increases for additional parcels and in higher appraisal fees than we originally anticipated.
Dennis, you said it was, you know, the process was drug out a little bit?
Yes.
What, what, drug it out?
Uh...
Was it them, was it us?
It was, it was city of Norfolk was gonna work on some of these easements on her own, and I made some inquiries and determined that it was gonna be more, more detailed and complex than I thought it was, so we went back to having them, them move forward with the easements, so.
What, what would the, what would the total amount of the engineering services be then for that, all of those plats?
The entire contract is 300 and some thousand dollars. I don't know what the right-of-way portion of that is, though.
I was just, I guess I was just curious if, if you know, on an average, does it, does it make the average work?
The total easement acquisition costs are 78,900 now, so we're in the $50,000 range before.
Okay. All right. Thank you.
Anyone else with any questions or quest for explanation? If not, are we ready to vote? Okay, please vote.
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right, next is discussion of the city of Norfolk's position as a property owner included in the paving District 504 and whether to vacate the portion of Queen City Boulevard included in this paving District 504.
Your Honor, I'll, I'll be abstaining from voting on this motion.
Your Honor, I also will be abstaining from this motion.
Your Honor, I will be abstaining from this motion also.
Anybody else?
Your Honor, I will introduce the motion.
I'd appreciate that, Dan. All right, a motion with a second. Let's have a little discussion on this.
Well, Mayor, Council, this is really just an opportunity. You're in a unique situation in this particular, along this particular roadway, because you're a property owner along with a handful of other folks. We did do, sent out a mailing to get responses to the property owners along Queen City Boulevard that, that, to gauge their interest in the possibility of either vacating this portion of Queen City Boulevard, which is north of Benjamin, by the way, or paving it. There is a paving district that is, has potential out there. You have those options, so as a owner of the property, you have a voice in that, and you have a unique, a unique opportunity to have more than a voice as a property owner, you have a voice as, as a community representative, obviously. So this is another one of those decisions that you kind of have to gauge and understand the trade-offs between just the particular street and you being a property owner and the usage thereof, and the overall usage in the community of that street and what that means, you know? So that's the discussion that I kind of think, you know, I recommend the council has tonight, or at least thinks about, because without all folks saying that they want that vacated, all the property owners wanting that street vacated, the street will have to be paved. So those are basically options there. Just gives us, gives staff clarity, it gives the project clarity, and allows us to move forward with whatever recommendation that the council would have for us. Clinton, can you add anything to that?
Yeah, helpful, here, Clint, will you?
Well, if you look at enclosure 28 to the agenda, you'll see the letter and the, and the form that we sent out to the property owners. And as Shane said, and just as a reminder, paving District 504 was created last fall, provides for, I think, October 1 of 2012, reflected here, and it requires the paving of that. That goes back to the railroad right-of-way, what was the abandoned railroad right-of-way was sold off to the adjoining property owners to the, that owned property adjoining the right-of-way to the west, and that, that provision, seven or eight years ago, whenever it was that that was sold, said that when there was development of those lots, the, the street needed to be paved. So that was what the paving district provided last, last year, when there was some development on, on one of those lots. And so our challenge was, the, kind of the challenge to the staff was, if, what else can we do besides pave 504, do paving District 504? And the response to that is, what's really in, in, in the letter and in the enclosure, which would provide, what we, what we asked in, in that is, we asked the people that owned the property along there, and I think there's 11 different property owners, the city being one of those. We asked if they wanted to pave, could proceed with the paving, or they don't want to pave it. And then the second part of that is, if you don't want to pave it, what's gonna happen to the paving district and the street that's there? So really, tonight, all that we're asking for is some direction from the council about what your preference is, the same way that we've asked that of any other property owners. Once we get this back, and at, at this point in time, we haven't got all, all of those back from, from the property owners, we've talked to a bunch of them. But when that comes back, what will eventually come to you before the council finally either end up with paving the street or not paving the street will be two things. One would be an ordinance by which you would revoke paving District 504. And we've, we've got the, we, and notwithstanding the conflicts of interest that we've seen here tonight, just so that we all understand, it takes five affirmative votes of the council to revoke, to provide a revocation of the ordinance, to, to, to bring that ordinance back. Should also be said that if, if the council votes, if the council vote would be four to one, then we turn to the mayor, just as though it was a tie vote, and, and the mayor can have the opportunity in that instance, under Nebraska law, to provide the fifth vote, which would, which would revoke the paving district.
What a lucky mayor.
What a lucky mayor, yeah.
Lucky mayor.
The second thing that would happen, if the paving district is revoked, the, the next thing would then be, do you want to vacate the street? This, the proposal that we've got would vacate the street, just would, starting at Syracuse Avenue on the south, and it would go up to the Tilkey's property on the west, the, just right by the, on the east, that's where the National, the, the, the south end of the National Guard, or not the National Guard, the Department of Roads Yard is at, and that would result in a dead end at that location. The rest of that would be, would be vacated. The other part of the question that we are asking all of these folks then, is we're saying if that property, if, if there, there was to be a revocation of the, of the ordinance creating the paving district, if the street were to be vacated, do you want to acquire that vacated street to add to the property that you already have? So that's, that's the, the second question, the next, the last question that's asked is, do you want to acquire that property? The third thing is, is that we can't create property that is landlocked. So right now, if we just vac, if the street were just to be vacated, the way things are right now, we've got a multitude of problems. We've got the street that itself would be in, in part, if, if we gave it, we, we've talked about, about transferring that to the adjoining property owners, so that they're, they take on the additional right-of-way. If we were to do that, if you were just to vacate the street now, you would also create every one of those 100-foot, 95-foot deep lots that was the railroad right-of-way on the west side of the streets. Every one of those is a standalone lot, even though it's pretty much, except for an exception or two, owned by the same people that own the property onto the west. You wouldn't have access to those lots, that would be illegal. Gotta have access to the lots. So what we're contemplating is, if you repeal the ordinance, if you vacate the street, then we need to simultaneously with doing that, we need to have a replating of that property so that the middle, the west side of Queen City Boulevard would be attached to the railroad lot, would be attached to the lot that fronts on Square Turn. If you go east, we'd do the same thing, so that the east side of Queen City would be attached to the lot that now has the east access onto Riverside. So we're just asking, and, and there's gonna be some cost, obviously, associated with that, so this is kind of a, an opportunity, I guess, for, to, to take the temperature of, of what the council is thinking, knowing that that wouldn't necessarily be dispositive of that. As Shane says, obviously, the property owners have, have a say in that. It's kind of like the downtown thing, there's also people that drive on that and, and use that road and whatever, and they might have a feeling about that. So I'll be quiet and answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions, any discussion, any?
Clint, at this point in time, the lots that exist on the west side, they're legal lots, correct?
Correct. Yeah, the, the, the lots that are on the west side of the street, we have the, the businesses, and many of those are occupied by businesses, Tilkey's, Sterling Computers, Marathon Press, they all have access to Square Turn. Okay? And then the railroad right-of-way lots, which are just east of the ones that I've just described, those are separate standalone lots, with the vast majority of those are owned, like Tilkey owns the one that's immediately east of them, Marathon owns the one east of them, KCM owns the one east of them, but they are standalone lots and, and could be sold and therefore need to have access. So that's what the plating would do, would be kind of erase that north-south boundary line, the, the, the boundary line, I guess, be the east or the west boundary line that runs north and south, so that they'd all have their access onto Square Turn.
Basically adjoining the two properties?
Yeah.
Into one.
Yeah, they would end up being one property, and we would, and it would go from Square Turn, in, in the, in the perfect sense, it would go from Square Turn through the railroad halfway to the, what is now the right-of-way of Queen City.
I guess I've only got one call against this, and that was a resident at the apartments directly north of Boulevard Village. They were concerned about access to that road, it was an easy out, they didn't have to go into the traffic on Riverside Boulevard. That's, that's the only concern I had, and I encouraged them to talk to their landlord because they have the final vote whether they want to be part of the paving district, but I wanted to pass that on to the rest of you, so.
I did talk to the landlords, and they either want it paved so it's clean, or they want it vacated so that kids can't come in and out the backs, and they're gonna be at the hearing whenever we have that, and... And they're going to be at the hearing whenever we have that and indicate that. But their, their absolute must, they said, it's got to be cleaned up. It's a mud hole. When it rains or snows, it's just a pit back there and they track that into every landowner on our streets and everywhere. So we either need to clean it up and fix it or close it, so. But I did talk to those people and they're, they're adamant, we have to do something, so.
How many residential property owners are we talking about here are affected along that road?
There's, well, there's three apartment complexes there, I believe. Village Green.
There's a, there's a fourplex, Syracuse Street Apartments, Boulevard Village, and Village Green.
Plus there's a, there's a two, duplex at the south end, as you say.
Yeah, I think that's a fourplex.
A fourplex, okay.
Right, right at the northwest corner of, right at the intersect, northwest corner of the intersection of Syracuse and Riverside.
But they all have access.
They would all have access, is that what you said?
Sure, absolutely.
If it's vacated?
They do, they currently do and.
Okay.
And they access off of, off of Riverside or off of Syracuse.
Village Green is the only one that has a lot of access off of Queen City. Boulevard Village has no access off of Queen City. Other than the fourplex that's right at the corner of Syracuse and Queen City, none of the other apartments along there have access to Queen.
Syracuse Street Apartments has none.
They have none, right.
And one, it looks like one of the four units, which is right at the, right at the intersection, northeast of the intersection of Syracuse and Queen City. One of those comes off of Queen, off of Queen City. The option that we've given to that property owner is that if they acquire, if they acquire that half of the right-of-way, they've got access over the, continued access over that east half of the right-of-way that they would be acquiring.
Did you say that?
They have indicated, they've already indicated that they don't want it paved, want it vacated, and want to buy the property.
Who, who did that?
That's the KCM's.
Okay.
Lawson.
Did you say if one person wants it paved out of those?
No, that's, that's not, that's not correct. At this point, at, at, at this point in time, the paving district is already in place. If you do nothing, the paving needs to occur.
Okay.
Okay? Because the paving district was already, was already created.
Ready to go.
So, you know, what, what happens with this is purely the prerogative of the council and the, and, and you can listen to whoever you want to listen to, the property owners, the folks that use the street, the general public, and take whatever action you want to take.
Scott, can I ask you a question, as far as emergency vehicles? I mean, is, when you vacate, is that any type of a concern to you as far as emergency? I mean.
I'm sure you're, you're potentially have a sort of position in that direction. Does what, Adam, ask about that in your study, that the effect of that, but you sort of could.
I don't know, I, I just was curious what that does when you, all of a sudden vacate when you've got as many residential locations down there as well as business, but.
Oh, I think, a thing to keep in mind on that, though, is the lack of the number of residential, residential properties that access off of that. Short of the, short of the Village Green apartment complex to the north and, and the singular one to down on Syracuse Avenue, is it, from what I understand? And I'm not so sure. I thought when the Village Green thing was first platted, because that was, that occurred back in the 90s, if I remember right, and I thought I saw it on the planning commission at that time. I did not believe that there was supposed to be access from that apartment complex going out onto, and it just kind of developed as sidewalks develop on college campuses, it's where people walk and drive. And so the, the, the premonition or the, the thought that, okay, we have an inalienable right to go out to the west and come down this street, I did not believe that that's how that piece of property was platted. And I could be wrong on that.
I think your recollection is correct, Jim. In fact, I looked at the subdivision agreement here in the last six months to a year as this project's been developing, and I think it said that they wouldn't access Queen City unless it was hard-surfaced. So.
Ah.
The other comment I was going to make, as it relates to fire protection, currently there isn't any water supply on Queen City north of Syracuse, so.
Okay. Thank you.
You have an apparatus back there, he's going to figure out how to get water to it.
Okay.
The, similar to what, what Jim is saying, and I, I thought I saw Cap Chapman starting to get up back there, is that I know that over the years, there's been some parking issues at Village Green with there not being adequate parking for, for visitors. And so some of that has moved out into, into this area of the street that we're talking about, about vacating. So perhaps if they were to acquire that, they might be able to make use of that for some additional parking. And I think, I think that's right, isn't it, Leon?
Yeah, I was just going to say, I would encourage you to go out after the meeting and drive that way, and it's, that street has become a parking lot, it's overflow parking for that apartment complex, which wasn't by design.
You have a question?
Yes, sir. Will you come up for us so we can, I'm going to ask you to state your name for me, too, and?
Yeah, I'm Mel Woods.
Okay.
Just, is it a possibility just to blacktop that area instead of going to the expensive?
Dennis, can you respond to that? Help us out?
If you build an asphalt concrete street to the same design standards as a concrete street, so that it's got the same expected life, the asphalt street in today's economics is going to be as expensive, if not more expensive.
Than the concrete?
Than the concrete. Pierce County has actually bid some projects asphalt against concrete, and the concrete has, has been less expensive.
I didn't realize it was that much, but I thought it might be a cheaper.
Sure.
I know, I know people that's been in the, in that retirement area and they complain of the dust all the time from people going by.
Right. Right.
People along that, it gets so much dust from the gravel.
Right.
One of the things that ought to happen here is for, for, for those people at Boulevard Village, if the street gets paved, the dust ought to go away. If the, if the, if the paving district is repealed, the street is vacated and there's no traffic there, the dust ought to go away.
Yeah, yeah. But there is a few, there's a few that do park along that street because they have running access to that street.
Yep, they're, they don't have vehicle access, but they park there and walk in.
Yeah, but there is units that's facing that street, too.
There's doors on that side.
The backside of them units.
They're back doors, is what you're saying.
Of course, from my experience with them, the board of field says, no, spend a dime unless I have to, so.
Well, you know what, that's kind of true of all of us sometimes, but thanks for coming forward, sir. Anyone else? Okay, are we ready to move forward? All right, then I would ask you to please vote.
What are we voting on?
Well, I'm, well, I'm sorry, we're, we're voting as to whether to vacate, if I understand right. Discussion of the city of Norfolk's position as a property owner included, to be included in paving District 504 and whether to vacate the portion of Queen City Boulevard.
Yeah, and I think what we're, if, if I may, Mayor?
Please.
I, I think what we're really asking for is, we're asking you to take a look at, at this enclosure number 28 here. And we're, we're basically, unless, unless Shane thinks otherwise, I think that what we're saying, is we're saying that, are, are you wanting us to direct the staff to proceed as if we're going to pave Queen City Boulevard or, or, or don't proceed with the paving of Queen City Boulevard? And then that, depending on how you answer that, we kind of go on to the question of, of are you willing to acquire the property and should we go ahead and, and, and work on the plating of that?
Correct.
Well, how'd you get all that in this? Yeah, very good, thanks, Beth, I appreciate that, because I was making an assumption that...
So a yes vote would mean that we do not want the paving district? Yes means no.
Long as you all know, I don't care. As long, as long as all you guys voting knows, knows what you're, what you're, what you're talking about. I think, I think.
As a property owner.
I think what you're really asking, I think what you're really asking is, do you want to proceed? Are you saying that, and, and I think you can change your mind later, okay? Hear from some other people and change your mind later. But I think we're really asking for the direction, just like we've asked all the rest of those property owners out there, to declare, do you want to, do you want to pave this or not pave it? And, and if we don't pave it, I'm, I'm, I'm going to assume that you're going to acquire the property and go through the, go through the rest of it to get rid of it, the way that we had talked about.
Correct.
And to plait it and so on and so.
Just want your response on this enclosure that's in your package, it's like the vast majority of the property owners responded already.
Well, that's not in the package.
Oh, I'm sorry. But you have in front of you now.
We've got a form, that was our little tally sheet that I shared, that I shared with.
You shared with councilman?
No. I did not.
I apologize.
We've got about half of the responses back, and everybody that's responded has said they...
Why don't you just let us give a half of the responses back and then?
Okay.
I, you know, I don't know, guys, are you ready to, to, do you understand what you're being asked to decide on? Okay.
Turn it on. Right now, I mean, we were just having discussions.
Right.
We don't have a motion or anything on the floor, correct?
There is a motion made, but I'm not sure.
A motion made to do what?
According to this, it would be to vacate, but according to Clint, we're voting on whether to continue with paving Queen City.
Well, I guess that's if. As a member of the paving district, right? I mean, this is simply an expression of the city of Norfolk's participation in the paving district on, on how to move forward, just as if they were a member of the survey, like any property owner.
Exactly. I, I think what it is, Councilman, is it's, it's a sense of the body. And, and I'm assuming, and the rest, Shane and Dennis, I'm assuming that if you say you want to stay the course with paving District 504, you're saying, I want to continue to pave this. If you say, I don't want to, I don't want to continue the, the place with that, we could set forth the, the rest of it that comes along and have some notion, and really, what we're really talking about is getting a sense of the body and knowing, getting some, some hint of what we need to do with the plating, because we got to bring that plating along at the same time we're, we're doing the vacation. Otherwise.
Because what I was understanding, what we were, what we were doing is discussing amongst ourselves here as, as a property owner along through there, what, you know, this question's come to us, what do you want to do?
Exactly right.
And so we're, we're not actually, the motion is not to, to vacate the, the motion, not to vacate the property or to vacate the resident, or the paving district. The motion is us as a property owner is, what is your opinion as far as proceeding or responding to the question there of, do you want to do the paving district or do you want to vacate it and buy the property?
That's right.
Expression of the city, of the sense of the city of Norfolk as a member of the paving district, correct?
Is that the question?
So then maybe to restate.
We need a rephrasing of the motion.
To restate, I would make a motion that we vacate Queen City Boulevard. Does that make sense?
See, I would have been looking at it then to say, do we want to be a part of the paving district?
Yeah, what we, what?
Can you read this, Beth? Does that help?
In the letter, is that, this is what you're referring to, right?
Yes.
The, in the letter, the option, A, is if you desire to proceed with paving, please check the appropriate box and proceed to the signing portion of the form. Or B, if you do, do not desire to proceed with paving, please check the box and proceed to fill out a portion of the form entitled Request for Vacation of Street and Repeal of Paving District. In that portion, you will need to check the box in paragraph two that reflects your desire about acquiring the vacated street.
It's sort of like writing instructions for assembly. I, I really think what we're, what we're talking about is, as Beth, is, as Beth says there, is are you wanting to proceed with the paving or do you not want to proceed with the paving? Would you encourage the council to pave the street or not pave the street and vacate it and acquire it? I think those are the two.
Does my motion, my restated motion make sense?
What I'm understanding, Clint, is either you want to proceed with paving or you don't. Once that decision is made, then you go on to the others?
I, I think that if that decision is made, we as staff know exactly what direction needs to be, what we need to be undertaking to get the next step ready for the council.
While the other responses are, come into the city.
Right.
So then I will restate again that I'll make the motion that we move not to pave?
Okay. Okay, you hear the motion?
Express the, express the sense of the city council as a member of the paving district.
Not to pave. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor.
Who was the second?
Dave. Are you seconding as, accepting that? Okay. Please vote.
I'm confused. All council members voting in the affirmative.
Yes, good job, boy.
Sorry about that.
All right. Thanks for the clarification, thanks for the great discussion. Get back up here, the rest of the council, and we'll continue.
Your honor?
Yes, sir.
When they bring that back in front of us, I would like for them to make a little better attempt to clarify this for us.
Point well made, Councilman Fums.
When, when it comes back, it will be very clear.
Okay, all right.
These three might get the sense that we can't operate without them.
Well, you showed them, Dale.
We knew, we knew that.
All right, next, I'm going to ask for consideration of approval of contract amendment number one with Olson Associates to the letter agreement for engineering services for 28 slash 24-inch water transmission line, resulting in an additional amount not to exceed $43,800. And I am going to entertain a motion for consideration.
I'll make the motion, your honor.
Second.
All right, and we're going to look to you, Dennis, to give explanation here.
At the end of my discussion, we'll actually be saving about $30,000. The city of Norfolk has two proj, city of Norfolk has two projects that are going to construction as we speak. One of them is the wastewater treatment plant, or sewer line behind the wastewater treatment plant repairing the line that was damaged in the flood. The other one is the water transmission line that's coming from the wastewater treatment plant to 13th and Monroe. HDR designed the sewer project, Olson designed the, the water project. Me and these projects are both coming to construction at the same time. We're going to take the engineering, construction services from HDR and give those services to Olson and Associates. We think one person can handle both of those projects. So we'll have an increase with the water project for Olson. We're actually going to have a decrease of about $70,000 on the HDR work, and that deals with the administration and, and some of those things, not having two folks on, on here and per diems and those types of things, so. Bottom line, we're increasing this contract, but overall, to the city of Norfolk ratepayers, water and wastewater, we should be seeing about a $30,000 decrease.
Any questions for Dennis on that?
So we'll see a change order coming back for engineering services on the HDR contract?
We probably won't do a change order, we'll just, we'll just have low, we will have less expenses because it's a, it's a time and material project. We pay for the actual, actual work that we have them do, so.
Thank you.
And we had pre-construction meetings on both of these projects last Friday, so we've already been able to see some of the benefits of combining the, the services.
Any other questions at all? If not, please vote.
All council members?
All council members voting in the affirmative.
All right. I would like to acknowledge that this will be the last city council meeting where we will have Captain Chapman with us as a member of the city of Norfolk. Leon, if you want to come forward, and I just want to say from all of us up here, thank you very much for the 40-plus years of service that you have given to this community. I would hope that your words to us are that it's been a, a great 40-plus years. Please know that, you know, every moment that you've been a part of us has been appreciated. Please know that, you know, every moment that you've been a part of us has been appreciated. You certainly have been an asset, so if you've got any words for us, again, like I say, realizing it's your last meeting, because if I understand right, the end of the month, you're telling us goodbye?
Sure.
Is that right?
Thank you very much. I have appreciated working for the city.
I didn't mean to put you on the spot, but you're doing a great job, so.
It's been a long time.
Yeah, it has.
It's a great city. That's why I'm still here. I raised my family here. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and best of luck. There is a public comment here tonight, and if there's anyone in the audience that wants to come forward, I, we would sure entertain listening to what your thoughts or questions or concerns might be, however, please understand that there's no action that this council can take. So is there anyone that wants to come forward and address the council, full council? Great. Say again, you...
I am concerned to...
Mr. Woods, right?
Right.
Okay, again, thanks.
I'm concerned to, they've had anything going where to get more gas toward Norfolk, we've had the gas problem where they didn't have enough ply.
Right.
Is there anything going on that might help us get that, more supply here?
I can tell you, there certainly is a lot of effort going on right now, we're working diligently to see what it is that we can do, so stay tuned with us. Certainly, as we learn what our alternatives or what our options may be, we will certainly share, so, but please know that we are working on it.
Yeah, well, I thought you, but I hadn't heard anything about it, and I just...
Well...
I'm concerned about it, really.
So are we, so are we. And it's, it's been a, kind of a, a long and drawn-out effort, and certainly, because it's federally regulated, there's a lot of other folks that have to be involved in helping us resolve, so.
Yeah, they keep saying there's so much natural gas, but they don't do any good if we can't get it here.
That's right, that's exactly right. You hit the nail on the head, so, thank you, we appreciate your being here. Anyone else that wants to come forward? Okay, seeing none, then, I will tell you that, if I understand right, we're going to have a little coffee and, and with, for the council, and this mayor, and some of our staff, so please feel free to stay after and have just some one-on-one conversation if you'd like, but with that, we are adjourned.